Chavez.
Here.
Councilmember Viscara.
Here.
Councilmember Yu.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Mann.
Here.
Mayor Sternquist.
Here. Thank you. If you would please stand and join me in the invocation. As we gather here today as members of the Temple City City Council, we pray that we are ever mindful of opportunities to render our service to fellow citizens and to our community, keeping in mind always the enduring values of life, exerting our efforts in those areas and on those things upon which future generations can build with confidence. Let us continue to strive to make a better world. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Greg, why don't you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening?
We have the voice scout.
Greg, how about this Greg?
We have the voice scout.
Oh, our voice scouts are here.
You're 161.
Okay, I'm sorry. Next time. So we have troop 161 here. The scouts meet at Temple City Methodist Church, located at 5957 Golden West Avenue in Temple City. And their scout meetings are held Thursday evenings from 7:30 to 9:00. And our flies will be led by Jake Brodebeck, with scouts Even Zhao and Du Nguyen. Welcome.
Color guard, attention. Color guard, forward march. Color guards, please post colors. All those in uniform and/or veterans, please salute. All those not in uniform, please place your right hand over your heart. Please jump in. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united states, with liberty and justice for all.
Color guard, before. Color guard retreat. Hold. Color guard dismissed. You may now be seated.
Thank you. We move to item five ceremonial presentations. Item A is our city council reorganization. I would just like to take this opportunity to thank the community for honoring me with the title of being mayor. And it was my third time being mayor and it was never any less humbling than the very first time I was mayor. So I very much loved being able to represent the community and my colleagues. And I look forward to the opportunity to somewhat take a little step back and pass the gavel on to our next mayor. But I definitely want to take this opportunity to thank some people that have been incredibly helpful this past year. And of course, Brian Cook with our city manager. I think we probably spoke at least daily, if not every other day, and sometimes a few times a day. And I told him that I'm just going to keep calling him that often now anyway. But thank you, Brian. Thank you for making this so easy for me and always there when I needed something. Peggy, our city clerk, and Jillian, our deputy city clerk. You couldn't ask for any better. I mean, they're always there in a moment's notice or to help us with anything that we need to file. And sometimes that can be very hectic, but they're always there in a pinch. So thank you both. Just the staff in general. Eliana, thank you so much for your help with the state of the city, just there when I needed anything. So thank you very much. Always done with a smile. So thank you. Our sheriff's department, every single one of you, of our team leaders, our deputies, our captain, just can't say enough. I mean, for the many times you'd pass up and down my street when I had curlers on or in my bathrobe and, you know, just wave and let me know you're looking out for my street. I very much appreciate that, too. Staff, just everybody. I mean, the community, the people, being in a grocery market and somebody that I didn't know saying, I think you're the mayor, aren't you? And it's a real cool thing to be able to say, yeah, I am. You know, I represent Temple City, I think, in my heart. But I just want to say that I loved every minute of it, but I'm ready to pass that gavel, as I said, once again. So thank you, everyone, if I left anyone out. But of course, my husband, Greg, who is over there. Wave, honey. Who just makes life easy for me. I mean, without his support, it's very difficult to not just be the mayor, but to be on city council because it takes a lot of time. But he's always there to support, to encourage, and he definitely is the wind beneath my wings. So thank you. Love you. All right. So we move to item two, and that's William.
Yes. And so Mayor Sternquist, to honor you for your outstanding year representing us as mayor, I would like to present to you something. Well, first, we have a bouquet. So let's do that.
Thank you. Thank you, William. Thank you, everyone. It's beautiful. I love flowers.
So as most of us here know, Mayor Sternquist has done an outstanding job in representing the city council on many regional entities. And we also know how much you love the library. So we're hoping, if you see this, you'll know where this is coming from. But on here, I would like to read, says Cynthia Sternquist, Mayor from 2022 to 2023. The city of Temple City thanks you for serving your community and for representing Temple City in numerous agencies throughout the San Gabriel Valley. And of course, we have the city logo. We have Foothill Transit. We have the COG, and we have SCAG.
That's beautiful.
So.
Beautiful. Thank you. That's really special. Thank you so much. Okay. Now I'd like to make a presentation to you. And I have a little guest who's going to come up here. And this is William Sun, who's so proud of his dad.
You should do it out here because the dais is too tall.
Jerry can't see him.
Take another one after. Thank you so much. Thank you. Want to sit up here? No. Thank you, William. And I can't say enough about William's help. William is always ready and willing to pick up a phone call if I call him, even it's when I know he's at work, but I really need to run something by him. So thank you. You've been a great Mayor Pro Tem and a big help to me. So thank you. Okay. And now we are going to our city clerk. Peggy?
Thank you, Mayor Sternquist. And now I'd like to ask for a nomination for the seat of the mayor.
Madam Clerk, it gives me distinct pleasure to nominate our Mayor Pro Tem to be our next mayor, William Mann.
Are there any other nominations? Can I have a second for the nominations?
Second.
Any objections?
Being that there are no further nominations or objection, Councilmember Mann, you're appointed to the seat of the mayor by unanimous consent. Congratulations.
And just one last thing before I leave this chair and move over. I want to thank our city attorney, Greg Murphy, too. And so thank you, Greg. You two have been there at a moment's notice and always returned my phone calls and have been very helpful. So thank you, Greg. Okay, so I guess I have to leave now?
Bye.
Okay, so.
Okay, so for the first thing, I do want to call for the nomination for the seat of Mayor Pro Tem. So, Madam City Clerk? Or does that mean? Okay. All right. So I'd like to call for the nomination for the seat of Mayor Pro Tem.
I would like to make a nomination. I would like to nominate Councilman Tom Chavez to be our next Mayor Pro Tem.
I'll second that.
And I guess, are there any other nominations? Seeing none, if I could repeat what the city clerk just said, we have congratulations to Mayor Pro Tem Tom Chavez by acclamation.
Doesn't Cindy have to move again?
Yeah, one more. We'll do it next meeting. Next meeting.
I couldn't resist.
Just kick you to the curb.
We'll eventually hammer her all the way out. And also, I would like to present to outgoing mayor Cynthia Sternquist. Oh, actually, I'm sorry. Presenteesh.
You have presented.
Oh, I see. Oh, there's another, I guess.
Okay. Okay, one last thing. I told a bit. I'm going to present William with his own gavel that says, William Mann, Mayor, 2023-2024.
I would like to invite Mayor Mann's father to come up and administer ceremonial oath of office to Mayor Mann.
Just yet.
Before we begin, I, President William Mann, do solemn swear, you follow the sword. That I will support and defend, that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of California, the Constitution of the State of California, against all enemies, against all enemies, foreign and domestic, foreign and domestic enemies. And that I will wear, that I will wear, through faith, through will, and allegiance, and allegiance, to the Constitution of the United States, to the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of California, and the Constitution of the State of California. That I, I take my obligation, that I take my obligation as mayor of the city of Temple City, as mayor of Temple City. We, without any mental reservation, we, without any mental reservation, are peppered up, face, or person, and yes, I will, and I will, well, and faithfully discharge, well, and faithfully discharge, the duties upon which, and the needs of whom, I'm allowed to end up, and to be.
Okay. And the next item, we also have, I would like to present a small gift to our new Mayor Pro Tem, Tom Chavez. I have a little helper. His name is Jacob. But he's running away.
He's right, they are heavy.
And next on our. Okay, next, we have council member comments. And I would like to start with Councilmember Viscara.
Well, this gives me great pleasure. And I appreciate Councilmember Chavez coming to the floor. I would normally have, I would normally, I guess, have been in contention to be the Mayor Pro Tem, but my own personal schedule makes that extremely difficult at this point in time. So Mayor, I mean, Councilmember Chavez has graciously accepted the responsibility and the job, and I thank you very much. And I thank the rest of the council for your support. And I'm looking forward to, well, actually, I think we're going to be seamless. We've been working very well together, at least since I've been on board. And I don't think I'm, I or the city are going to see any difference in the way this council operates. We're still going to be, I'd say, a premium kind of council and hopefully continue to provide the service and our responsibilities as we have for the past so many years. So William, welcome. And that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Viscara. Next, we'll have Councilmember Yu.
Good evening, everyone. It gives me, you know, great honor to be here to thank our outgoing mayor, you know, for the great work that Mayor Sternquist has done during her term. People might think our job is just ceremonial, but, you know, it really, people do more than the call of duty. I mean, look at the library next door, and that's very fitting that we present her with an art piece because of all the work that she has done with LA County, securing the funding from the county, and secure a lot of money, a lot of monies. I'm really, really impressed for the artwork. Because initially, we weren't going to have any artwork at the library. So anyone that might have visited the library can see what difference the artwork has made. So Mayor Sternquist, thank you so very much for the great work. And obviously, we also thank then Mayor Pro Tem and now Mayor Mann for your work, you know, leading and supporting Mayor Sternquist. And finally, I'd say that I'm looking forward to working with you, Mayor Mann, and also our newly-minted fourth time, I guess, as a charm, or maybe fifth time, Mayor Pro Tem Chavez. Looking forward to that. Looking forward to supporting both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Chavez?
Yeah, see, you know, it takes a while to get the titles down. We'll be calling each other mayor and council member and Mayor Pro Tem for a few months, probably. But, well, you know, much has been said over the last couple of years of how difficult it is to be a mayor during a pandemic. I know for Vince and I, we experienced that firsthand. But it's no less difficult to be a mayor coming out of a pandemic. And I think that's where Mayor Sternquist has shined. She has really led our city and done a fantastic job in returning us to somewhat of a normalcy. And, you know, she's done it with confidence, with compassion, and with a dedication, not only to the city, but also, as mentioned earlier, her work on our regional boards. It helped our city in so many different ways that many of us don't really get a chance to see. So for all of that, I know it's been, in some ways, probably a long year, in some ways, a short year. All of us have gone through that up here, and I just can't tell you how grateful we are to have you up here. And you've done a great job.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
I do want to thank Councilmember Viscar, of course, for his nomination, too. You know, when he retired from council a few years ago, we lost a great deal of knowledge and experience. And then we kind of pulled him back, okay, and asked him to return. And he did it without hesitation, coming right back into his seat and did all the things that he was used to doing. And of course, did it, everything with the city in his best interest. And so thank you for all that you've done and what you will continue to do. I appreciate it. You know, I remember when Fernando did step down, I made a comment that he was my original mentor on city council. And, you know, we would talk a lot. And he still remains that today. So, you know, we're the two old guys on the council. So, and I say that in good spirits. And truthfulness. Yes. To William, our new mayor. As Fernando said, this is going to be kind of seamless. I have no doubt that you are going to do a fantastic job. You're going to step right into the position and lead our city. And I tell you, it will be a pleasure and an honor to serve with you. And how special is it to have your father swear you in? You know, as a father myself, I can think there's probably no better thing than to share such a moment with your father. And so, you know, thank you for that, Mr. Mann. And yes, you are the first father of the city now, I guess. That and a few bucks will buy you a cup of coffee at Starbucks.
You can ask Greg. He'll tell you.
Be careful about that. Lastly, to Vince. You know, we came in together and likely, we're going to probably leave together at some point. It's hard to believe that it's been 14 years now.
14 years.
14 years. How time flies when you're having fun, right? But it's been an awesome experience to work with you. You know, we all know Vince is such a tireless worker and always researches everything. And he, everything that's given to us, we have a lot of information that's given to us every week to get ready for our meetings. And he has read it from cover to cover. And he knows his stuff. There's no question about it. So thank you, Vince. It's been a pleasure. And look forward to the next year as well. And that's all I have. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Chavez, for those comments and kind words. I was originally debating whether or not to do a ceremonial swear-in because for those of you that have followed city council, it's, you might see it in a lot of other cities, but we normally don't do that. But I guess I changed my mind yesterday. I was talking to Brian. I said, I'd like to make a small tweak. There's a lot of, I guess, for me personally, a bit of a symbolism to that. My council member Yu mentioned the role of the mayor is largely ceremonial. But for me, there's a bit of a personal touch. The Bible that my father was holding was a gift from my late aunt when I first graduated from college. And I spent two months living in Taiwan with my aunt, my uncle, and my cousin. It was this idea that I'm about to enter the workforce and so I'm not going to be able to take long vacations anymore, right? So I was like, all right, here's my last hurrah, right? And so I'm in Taiwan for two months, and she taught me so much. And, you know, she was very active in her church in Taiwan. And so we bonded over a lot of common values and common interests. And may she rest in peace. Of course, my father, some of you may know, he was my first exposure to public service, even though I was a teenager when he was serving on the El Monte Union High School Board. I knew very little about what the school board did. I just knew along the lines of, oh, well, he makes decisions that affect the principals and all the administration, right? And also, my first exposure was also campaigning for him and knocking door to door and, you know, getting that exposure, talking to residents. And they would ask me questions. And I would be like, oh, yeah, I know how to answer that. I know what my father stands for, what his values were. But little did I know that that would translate to something more in the future. I just didn't have the perspective or the experience at that time. So really, my father, my mom, two of the really key people in my life who is the reason why I am who I am today. And of course, my dear wife Helen, who does not enjoy public settings a lot. She always tries to hide away from the spotlight. But she has been a strong support for me throughout my journey. I love her very much. And I thank her for bearing with me through thick and thin as our schedules are, can get kind of crazy and hectic sometimes. And she's always been there for me. So I can't do it without my family. Of course, Adrian, my firstborn, who was the one who helped Cindy give me the flowers. He is seven and a half. And I was just talking to Peggy earlier. I was thinking, my first time as mayor was when Adrian was two and a half. That was five years ago. And he was doing the same thing that Jacob was doing, which is running around in circles on the dais, doing the exact same thing. So he takes after his older brother. So Jacob is two and a half. I just find it weird personally that they coincide, this five-year difference. It wasn't on purpose. We didn't really plan it that way. But I, and Adrian's age is also roughly how long I've been serving on city council. So it's a stark reminder of how time flies. And, you know, in the blink of an eye, he's in second grade in La Rosa. But, you know, I was at La Rosa last week volunteering with their Read for America event on. But, you know, I was at La Rosa last week volunteering with their Read for America event on school. And I really, I met two other parents who were volunteering with me. And what I found kind of just really profound but subtle in just talking with the two ladies was this idea that we all loved our community here, right? We all kind of, we all find our own ways to give back, what we are capable of, what our time permits. Everyone's trying to balance different things, family, work, life in general. And so, what I love about Temple City and why I never want to move away from Temple City is really the bonds of our community is so strong. I mean, look at all the great events, our local organizations. I mean, we just had the Camellia Festival celebrated 79th Festival. I mean, these are like long and enduring traditions that kind of bind us together in more ways than one. And I am proud to say, I believe we are different and unique. And, you know, we're in the heart of the San Gabriel Valley, but, you know, you come to Temple City and you will see the difference. You talk to the people, and you will see the difference. You ask the people, well, why have you lived here for 40, 50 years? They'll tell you why. There's a lot of great reasons why. And so, I am so proud of our community, which, your work, all of you in your roles as commissioners, volunteers, so on, so forth, you make our jobs on council a lot easier, because we can't do it without you. You know, we know we're not a product of our own individual efforts. It's part of the collective effort that makes all of us shine together. And that's why the second stint as mayor, I go in with less, I don't want to use the word fear, but I guess that when you're entering something new, right, there's always this unknown factor. You're like, well, how am I going to do this? What am I going to do in that situation? And the second time around, I was just talking to Cindy, I feel like it's going to be smoother, it's going to be easier. And like Fernando was saying, seamless, right? I truly believe that. We, that's what I also appreciate, is my, everyone that I share the dais with, consummate professionals, but also, you all share a deep, deep affection and deep sense of service to Temple City. And you are all a role model for me. When, I remember when I first was elected, I was looking to all of you for guidance, mentorship, leadership. And I continue to do so even now. So, I thank you for that, the friendship, all the advice. Like Cindy talks about, you know, calling me. I call her, too, randomly. I call, I call all of you from time to time, or even just at the events, right? Like, Tom, I always remember, when I was first elected, we were at the concerts in the park, and Tom went out of his way to introduce me to a lot of the people that he knew, our residents, and just, he was like, hey, this is our newly-elected councilman. That was like eight years ago. I can't believe it, right? And so, I'm so grateful for that, and you've always been so helpful in making my job easier, helping me understand. So, thank you for that. And, of course, Fernando, I know your institutional knowledge is something I always draw upon in all of our meetings. You always bring up something that reminds us, well, this is why we made certain decisions, right? That perspective is really, really helpful for me to understand that. Speaking of perspective. Mom is down there. Okay, he's going to find mom. And, you know, Councilmember, you, Vince, you're, if someone was to say, who was the main reason I even considered running for city council, I would probably say Vince. He was the one who encouraged me to be much more active in the city. And that's how I joined the General Plan Advisory Committee, how I got more involved with Neighborhood Watch at that time. So, and to this day, Vince is still someone I turn to for a lot of advice and how to handle things. So, thank you. And of course, Mayor Sternquist, Cindy, what a journey, right? Someone I look up to in terms of just putting your heart out there. I think that's what a lot of people appreciate about you, and I appreciate about you, is the authenticity is there. And there's really nothing that can replace that, I think. And that also goes for my colleagues, but Cindy just has a way of really putting herself out there. And you know she really is sincere and cares about you, the particular issue that you may have, the organization that you represent, and putting the time and effort to invest and dedicate yourself to that. And I think it's really appropriate, this was kind of a discussion Brian and I had. We're like, I want to do something for Cindy that really reflects her service to the city. And nothing, in my opinion, better represents that than your work for the library. So, I hope whenever you see that, you will know what a contribution you made to making the library happen. And of course, we know you love Foothill Transit, COG, and all the other agencies that you represent us on. So, we want to memorialize that. And we know you will continue to represent us well in that capacity. And finally, I'll just say, you know, looking forward, we, as a council, we have already been discussing a lot of things moving forward. It should be of no surprise to you that our primary goal is investing back in the community, whether it's building a new park like Primrose Park. For those of you who follow, we've already talked about and made a motion to move forward to reinvest in Live Oak Park and Temple City Park, the playground equipment. We heard a lot of you tell us, hey, that needs a facelift, it needs a renewal, and we're going to do it. There's an opportunity, a time and place to do so. We also hear you about your concerns about public safety. So, we're going to explore more ways to work with our amazing, dedicated sheriff's team. Can't say enough about you guys and gals. Great leadership from the captain, and we certainly will continue to work on that front collaboratively with you. And of course, me, I can never escape my civil engineer hat, so I'm always a big fan of public works and investments. So, hopefully, all the roads that you've seen that we've been repaving for the last five, six, seven years, it's, we're on a mission. We always get calls, when's my street going to be fixed? When's that pothole going to be filled? Trust me, we want to do that as much as you do. I always remark that, you know, the street I grew up on, where my parents still live, is right down the street from In-N-Out Burger on Lower Azusa. And I said, ever since we moved there in 92, I don't recall the last time the city's done some significant repairs of that street. So, it's not like we don't want to do it. We want to find the best way to invest back in our community that makes sense. So, there is, you know, there's a limited pool of funds that we're working with, and we want to try to make the best decisions possible. And lastly, I'll just end by saying, on a very more personal note, some of the feedback that I've gotten throughout my eight-year journey here is, some of you might know, I speak, Helen and I converse in Cantonese. I speak with my dad in Cantonese. I speak with my mom in Mandarin. And I speak with Adrian and Jacob in Mandarin. And my, the story that my dad always loves to tell me, and it's become kind of like my story, is when I was in first grade, he gets a call from the school district and says, "Mr. Mann, your son is on the verge of being transferred to ESL. You need to talk to your son more in English. He needs practice." And my dad turns around, and he's a teacher, for those of you who don't know. He's a Chinese teacher for over 30 years. And he basically turns around and tells me, "You are no longer allowed to speak a word of English at home." And I thank him for that, because if he hadn't done that, I don't, well, first of all, I probably wouldn't have been able to, Helen and I probably wouldn't have dated and eventually got married. Language, there's a certain bond with language that I've grown to appreciate. And in my capacity on city council, what I've realized is that connection extends to our community as well. As many of you know, we have a lot of residents who also speak Mandarin and Cantonese. And so, over the years, I've seen myself more as a bridge builder. We want to build bridges between different cultures, different communities, different generations. And so, I kind of see myself wedged between, you know, technically, I'm a first-generation immigrant, because I wasn't born here. I was born in Hong Kong. But I came here so young that, for all purposes, I am what we call ABC, which is American-born Chinese. So, sometimes I feel like a chameleon, like sometimes when I'm switching languages. Like earlier, Ms. Chang from World Journal was asking me some questions, and I realized, oh, man, I'm struggling with some of my Mandarin right now when I'm put on the spot. But that same situation kind of applies to when residents come up and ask me. And they say, sometimes the first question they ask me is, oh, do you speak Chinese, or do you speak Mandarin? And I go, yes, I could, to, you know, to a certain extent, right? I won't be able to talk about political things in Mandarin. But I've grown to appreciate that, and all of us here have our respective roles and connections to the community. And we are all bridge builders. And looking forward, I would just say, the call to action to everyone is let's continue building those bridges within our community and also our partners outside of our community. And it is a deep honor and privilege to serve as your mayor. And thank you for interesting me with that. Thank you. And speaking of partners in different agencies and levels of government, we do have a number of dignitaries tonight. I would like to, I know they have some presentations they would like to make to outgoing Mayor Cynthia Sternquist. First, from the Office of Congressmember Judy Chu, we have Senior Field Representative, Ms. Miley Plan.
Thank you so much. I really didn't want to follow that. Thank you so much for your words. So, first of all, thank you so much for inviting me to celebrate both Mayor Sternquist and now Mayor Mann. It's always been a pleasure working with you both. For Mayor Sternquist, you've just been such a great leader over this past, last year, and just always, we can always come to you. And you've left Temple City a much better city. I mean, the library is amazing. That park is great. My kid was playing on it and had a blast. So, thank you so much for all your work. And Mayor Mann, I know this is your second time as mayor, so I know you're going to do amazing. And, yeah, I look forward to what you'll be bringing to the city, all your ideas, and all of your creativity and innovation. So, we really look forward to working with you going forward. But, so, on behalf of Congresswoman Judy Chu and the 20th Congressional District, I wanted to present a certificate of congressional recognition to both Mayor Cynthia Sternquist and Mayor Protem William Mann for all of your work last year. Thank you.
Perhaps you just, perhaps you just stay up there. They're going to give you the air.
We'll just be more efficient here. So, next, we have the distinct pleasure of, from the Office of Senator Anthony Portantino, Mr. Marco Lundgren.
Thank you, Mayor. So, my name is, for those of you that don't know me, my name is Marco Lundgren. I'm here on behalf of Senator Portantino. We, so Senator Portantino actually represented Temple City back when he was in the state assembly, and that's how he knows former Mayor Sternquist, as well as the other council members here. But we have the distinct pleasure of being your representative again, this time in the California State Senate. You know, I've been coming to Temple City since January, and I've been to so many events here already that I already feel like I'm starting to know you guys quite well. And, you know, it was great hearing both of your speeches tonight. Mayor Mann, it was great learning more about your childhood and stuff growing up here in Temple City. And Mayor Sternquist, it was great just learning about, you know, what you've been doing here throughout your many years of being on the city council. So, I have a certificate here for outgoing Mayor Cynthia Sternquist, on behalf of Senator Portantino, to thank you for all your efforts in bettering the community of Temple City and making it truly what a great city that it is. Thank you.
And next, from the Office of Assemblymember Mike Fong, we have Field Representative Cassandra Carmona.
Hello, everyone. Thank you all for having me. Thank you, council. I am here to represent the Honorable Assemblymember Mike Fong, and I am also a very proud Temple City citizen and alumna from Temple City High School. So, thank you. Again, it's a true privilege to be with all of you here tonight, to honor two of the most exceptional people that I have grown up seeing and admiring. And so, I just want to start with recognizing Mayor Cynthia Sternquist, who is literally the leading lady of the council, and someone who, again, I admire so much personally for all that you have done with your efforts to beautify the library and lead the city from the post-pandemic as we have been recovering. And so, you know, it's just been an honor to see the return of trust in our local government under Mayor Cynthia Sternquist's reign, and of course, the establishment of the Senior Lunch Program, as well as Primrose Park's construction and the Temple City Library full expansion. And then, her active involvement has kept the spirit strong within our city, as I have seen firsthand. And I just want to thank you again so much sincerely for your entire leadership and passing, you know, the successful term and it going on to Mayor Protem William Mann, who's now Mayor William Mann, and someone who I have also been very much admiring you as you balance your, you know, personal life with your full and vibrant family and your full-time job with the county, bringing your expertise from being on the General Plan Advisory Committee and an area leader for the Neighborhood Watch. You have taken so many steps to keep the residents of our community safe. And so, I want to applaud you both for your outstanding advocacy for all of the city's residents and for the constituents within our Assembly District. And so, now, I would like to present you both with certificates of recognition. Thank you so much.
Next, we also have, from the Office of the LA County Fifth District Supervisor Catherine Barker, Assistant Field Deputy Tiffany Tran.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. On behalf of Supervisor Catherine Barker, we just want to commend you and thank you, Mayor Sternquist, for your past leadership over the past year. As Mayor Protem now Chavez says, as difficult as it was navigating the pandemic, it's just as difficult navigating out of it and back to normalcy. So, thank you for your leadership to the city of Temple City. I think everyone can see the love, the true love that you have for the community in bettering the residents' lives. So, thank you for that. And to Mayor Mann, congratulations. We look forward to partnering with you and our office and looking forward to all the great things that I know you'll be doing. So, yeah, congratulations. So, on behalf of Supervisor Barker, I do have a certificate for outgoing Mayor Sternquist. So, on behalf of Supervisor Barger, I do have a certificate for outgoing Mayor Sternquist.[1529.66][1532.01][applause]
Thank you so much. I think that was very representative of the relationships we have with our representatives at the local, state, and federal level. Thank you so much for spending the time to be here with us and we look forward to working with all of you in the coming year. I also do want to mention and thank the cities of Arcadia, Monrovia, Rosemead, and San Gabriel. All of our neighbors here in the San Gabriel Valley, they do, unfortunately, they do not have representatives that could make it tonight. Some cities also have City Council meetings that coincide with ours, so it's difficult for us to be at each other's ceremonial reorganizations. But they do have certificates for outgoing Mayor Cynthia Sternquist. They're all here. So, we will be handing those to you. So, all right. Next, we move on to item number six, which is public comments on items not listed on the agenda. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a comment at this point? All right. Seeing none, we will close public comment and move on to item seven, the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion unless removed for further discussion. Do we have a motion for the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk, may we have the roll call vote, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Mann?
Yes. Consent calendar has been approved. Next item, public hearing, we have none. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, we have none. And next, we have an update from our city manager.
Mayor Mann, I'll be brief. Thank you, Mayor Sternquist, for the last year. It's a pleasure working with you as always in the entire council. Mayor Mann, look forward to working with you as well. And to a good 2023, 2024. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next update from our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No legal update tonight. Just again, thank you to all of the council for your trust in us and for your leadership of this community. And we look forward to the next year of working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is item 13, council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Do we have any? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to 14, council items separate from the regular agenda. Any additional items from council? No? Okay. Then we'll move on to 15, additional public comments. So, normally, we have a lot of items in between, that's why there's two public comment sections. But there's anyone who had remorse about the previous public comment section and would like to come up now? No? It's just two minutes ago, right? Okay. So, we'll close the additional public comments. And again, thank you all for being here with us tonight. The meeting is adjourned.